Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for October 24th, 2022. Councilmember Stokes is unable to participate in person. Fortunately, we have him virtually, but I need a motion to give permission to participate remotely.
I move to approve Councilmember Stokes' remote participation in tonight's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilmember Stokes, you're in. Deputy Mayor, or I guess we have the roll call first. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Deputy Mayor, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a proclamation tonight. It's Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month, and we have Councilmember Lee reading the proclamation. And when he's done, we'll give the audience participant, I think it's Vansy Ready, an opportunity to speak if he would like after, sorry. And then we'll do a photo op with everybody who wants to join in. So Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Bellevue and the nation continue to be influenced by the extraordinarily cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of people in our communities, including a significant Hindu-American population. And whereas there are an estimated 1 billion Hindu worldwide and approximately 3.4 million Hindu Americans living throughout the nation. And whereas Hindu Americans in Bellevue represent a variety of ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent. And whereas Bellevue and our country have greatly benefited from the many innovations and contributions of Hindu Americans, including the Vindanta philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classical Indian art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service. And whereas many Hindu immigrants come to the United States as students, adults, in search of economic opportunities or to unite with family members, while others have arrived in this country after facing religious persecution in their countries of origin. And whereas the city of Bellevue is proud to recognize the positive influence of Hindu Americans on Bellevue's vitality, growth, and well-being. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robertson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, we do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Bellevue, and acknowledge the significant contributions made by residents of Hindu heritage to our city, and seek to increase awareness and understanding of the Hindu-American community. Signed by Lynn Robertson, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So Vansy Ready, did you want to say something? You can come up here and... I think it's on. Have a seat and they'll figure it out. There you go.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Hindu-American community, we accept and thank you, Mayor Lynn Robinson, city councilors, and city staff for processing and awarding proclamation during the festive season of Navaratri and Diwali. Today is a very auspicious day for all of us because today is the day of Diwali. So thank you very much for announcing that on the day of Diwali. And I'd like to thank all my community members and leaders who came in spite of a festival day to attend this and accept the proclamation. We've been working with you, and a mayor, honorable mayor, came to Darshna event. Even Janice attended multiple events with us, and Kona Lee, you gracefully, you know, joined our events in the past. From Indian community, Indian Hindu community, we have been supporting the local communities by helping the homeless shelters during the pandemic. We can proudly say we have served more than a million meals to the hunger. So, and we've been doing food drives every week from one or the different organization because we represent 34 different organizations in the local community. So the proclamation sends an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu-American community in greater Bellevue area and helps educate all Americans about our incredible traditions. Over the last few years, there has been a significant growth of Hindu Americans in region, and we have been contributing in all aspects of public life to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. It would bring the residents immense pride and gratitude to know that the city recognizes the contributions of Hindu Americans here. I'm happy to share that the Hindu-American community, in collaboration with various community organizations like HSS, SEWA USA, HAF, BAPS, WATA, Bellevue Hindu Temple, Saibaba Temple, TTA, and other organizations, who is engaged in driving service initiatives called SEWA Diwali, a food donation campaign, as I mentioned, during the festive seasons in Bellevue, and contribute back to the local food banks and the underserved in our neighborhood. So we've been doing other activities like a blanket drive, toy drive, and, you know, helping the homeless shelters and women's shelters. Would like to work with Bellevue City to close collaboration to see where the help is needed, and we are looking forward to work with you in future. I would like to once again thank you, Mayor, and the city council members for proclamation, and we'll look forward for the continuous collaboration. Thank you very much. Namaste. Happy Diwali.
Thank you. All right.
And a small thing, you know, because the day of Diwali, you got some sweets. Would like to distribute that to you after picture.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you again. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Just thinking, Mayor, there are 12 total pre-registered speakers this evening. And I will let everyone, including the council and the public, know that oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. And the council, per rule, allows three people to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Once we reach three speakers, we will not be able to hear from anyone else on that topic. I do not believe we will run into any issue with that this evening based on the list. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Kirsta English. Ms. English, I'm going to look for you online. Can you hear me? Ms. English, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and I'm going to have to ask for some clarification. This particular speaker and the next two speakers have a PowerPoint. Were you intending to speak three minutes each or a total of three minutes?
Um, I believe we will speak for less than three minutes each, but it'll be more than three minutes total. Like mine is a minute and a half, so.
That's fine. We're going to go ahead and get your PowerPoint up. I will time you separately, and we'll be given three minutes. And your time begins now.
Hello, my name is Kirsta English. I'm the founder of Trees for Livability, the Bellevue-based nonprofit that's urging you to protect and expand our tree canopy. Next week, land use will initiate work, or next week, November 7th, land use will initiate work with the city council to examine how best to rewrite tree codes. This week, we want to summarize some key points from our tree code studies so council members can discuss these ideas with land use. Next slide, please. Cities around us are stepping back from the concept of retaining a percentage of trees on existing lots and instead looking at the bigger picture. What kind of tree density do we want in our residential neighborhoods? Bellevue has a goal to achieve 40% tree canopy by 2050, and residential property makes up 65% of Bellevue's tree canopy. Federal Way, for example, defines minimum tree density targets and uses this to determine how many trees can be removed. If a lot is above the tree density target, trees can come out until it hits the target. If lots fall below that density, trees must be, can be taken out, but then replanting must occur, which will achieve similar canopy coverage when trees reach maturity. This approach acknowledges that we must work together as a community to achieve the desired outcome. I'd like to turn it over to the next presenter. Next slide, please.
And the next speaker is Don Marsh. Mr. Marsh, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay. My name is Don Marsh, and I'm involved in various tree planting and protection projects throughout Bellevue. Nearby cities require a permit for removal of significant and landmark trees. Permit fees provide funding to maintain and enhance the tree canopy and enforce regulations. The city of Bellevue allows five trees to be removed from a property without a permit. Neighbors are often surprised and dismayed when a tree that provides community benefits is suddenly cut down. Permits provide notice to neighbors, lessen friction among residents, and provide a little time to consider where and how to replace lost trees. Considering the impact that removal of a large tree can have on our community and the environment, it's wise to make sure good options are considered. Next slide, please, and next presenter.
Our next speaker, Lee Sargent.
My name's Lee Sargent, and I'm for the Trees for Livability tonight. Effectively, I want to say, without enforcement, we have a lot of things happening. We have trees that are being removed, and then they're being left to saying, well, hey, what's the penalty? They get called in because they took out more than four, five trees in my neighborhood. They took out seven, five to begin with, and then they said, oh, the year changed, and it was two more. Issues are, we have to have enforcement along with the permits. We have to have fines, and we have to have penalties. It's not something I like to see, but it's something that people respect and actually do something about. Issues are, right now, I've had neighborhood friends who've basically called up to do these things and then been told by compliance, oh, you're cutting down five trees? Okay. And then we have another one who says, well, hey, we can't do anything about that, but hey, they were taking out some things out of the house, so we need to look and see if they actually have a permit to actually make changes. I think it's really important for us to recognize that if the city compliance people feel like this is, this is really important to take out those things and that. And we have trees which are feeding our, our lives with oxygen and reducing the various quantities that are going on. I have to say, enforcement along with the permits are very necessary. I thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Craig Spiezel, who also has a PowerPoint. And Mr. Spiezel... Mr. Spiezel, can you hear me?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. We have your PowerPoint up. I will time you separately. You have three minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm Craig Spiezel, and I'm speaking tonight in response to meetings with probably over 100 residents over some confusion of the proposal from the police department for increased staffing. So, next slide, please. So, in summary here, I want to make it really clear, I'm supporting the police department's staffing request that was presented to council. And at the same time, I'm encouraging council to look at alternatives to tax increases. We're in a significant economic environment that has changed and have a huge impact, and every increase on residents is having a big effect and combined with levies. Next slide, please. I've done some analysis here, and you may have heard that staffing has been relatively flat for the past 22 years. And I think this slide illustrates it very clearly, the top line being total staff, the blue line being commissioned officers. What's interesting is while staffing's relatively flat, we've seen a 37% increase in number of calls in the past decade, and just over the past five or six years, about a 19% increase in crime. Next slide, please. I think one of the things that's also really important while staffing's been flat is how the population has grown. And one of the national metrics we're looking at policing and public safety is staffing per thousand residents. This slide here clearly shows the decline as population has grown. We have not kept pace with that. And I think as we look at the traffic response, as a result of traffic, high-rise buildings, we're only going to see a bigger challenge in order to meet requirements for the city. Next slide, please. So, one of the questions came up at last council meeting was why we need transit police. And I think there's some really clear data. I did a fair amount of research over the past month, and clearly, light rail is, in multiple cities around the nation, becomes a big magnet for crime. And we need to look at that, and we're looking now versus when it becomes a problem. And one of the other challenges that we're faced with is King County Response Time is two to three times longer than city of Bellevue police. So we need to staff the transit police staffing department as soon as possible. Next slide. So, again, in summary, I'm proposing that we fully support the police department's request, but at the same time, encourage council to look at the collective impact to all the tax increases. One of the specific areas, look at the legal remedies for clawing back funding that's been allocated to Sound Transit for transit policing for King County, and look at other areas to reclaim fees or recoup costs. Again, as I mentioned before, it's a collective impact. We have several levies that residents are being faced with, and every dollar has an impact to residents. Again, I have other data in this deck, and I'd be happy to take questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spiezel. The next speaker on our list is Pamela Unger, who I believe is in person.
Hi, my name is Pam Unger. I live at 200 111th Avenue, Southeast Bellevue, Washington. My house is just on the other side of the East Main Street Station. Hello, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members. I'm a 10-year Bellevue resident. I deeply believe in our governmental processes and working within the system. My personal history of engagement within the city supports that. I'm here because I'm in a situation in which the system is not working as intended, and I'm asking you to help. We bought our house, it was, when we bought our house, it was right-sized for me and my husband to accommodate our growing family. And because we love the location and the city and the community we found, we want to stay put and just grow the house. To that end, we've been working on plans to build an addition onto the backside of our house, and as our permit moves through review, it is getting unduly held up at land use code review. The feedback I've received is that my application does not conform to Section 2025M 040B3. This code was put in place with many others intent to thoughtfully bring the light rail and better mass transit to the greater east side, while still protecting property rights and mitigating impacts to residents that were adjacent to the new light rail system. My specific request is to either add better definition to the code or allow for an exception to that code for my open permit application, 21-106238BR. Chemo Burden is our permit reviewer, his supervisor is Matthews Jackson. That code section says there's a structural separation requirement in a transition area around the station while it's being built, and permanent structures cannot be within 60 feet of the station during that time. Our addition is slated to be 55 feet away. I'm asking for council to add more definition to the code because I've tried to determine when these codes are lifted, but I can't see any bright lines. I've deferred to definitions provided by city staff, but the definitions have changed, and they only changed after we provided support to indicate that the previously provided conditions to proceed have been met. In this case, in April 21, Mr. Jackson said the permit wouldn't be improved until train operations are commenced. In July of 21, I followed up with Mr. Burden about what train operations meant in a pair of calls. Do we need to wait until the light rail is open? No, but testing needs to be underway. How do you define testing is underway? There will be articles published indicating there are trains on the tracks and testing is underway. Articles to that tune started being published a year ago. When our application came back to this point in the review process this past summer, we provided these articles. In September, the city came back and said, it can't just be testing, it has to be active testing. Neither of these appear to be in the code. The rationale for this interpretation and holdup has not been explained at all. But the definition for these restrict, for when these are going to be lifted, is now when there are trains on the track running both directions and on a continuous schedule, but perhaps without passengers. And if you've been following along, the light rail project has been pushed out another year. By the way, Sound Transit has indicated they have no concern with me doing work on my property between now and once each link extension is open. This is moving the goalposts. It's not grounded in addressing a substantive issue. It's capricious. I do not believe it's how the council intended this code to be upheld. I hope this council will take actions to address the situation and work with city staff to approve my open permit application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Unger. The next speaker on our list...
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt for just a moment and ask the city manager to follow up with that and maybe get development...
We'll take a look at it.
...services to respond because we can't respond to you here at the meeting, but if you could email your comments to us, that would be helpful.
With support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Angela Fan, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Fan, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
I first want to start by thanking the mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members and staff for having me here tonight. For those who might not know me, my name is Angela Fan, and until just recently was a resident of Bellevue and also served on the Bellevue Human Services Commission, as well as worked for the city of Bellevue. I was honored to be a part of this year's grant funding cycle, which, if I have my dates correct, you will be receiving the commission's recommendations tonight. This year's cycle of funding brought a record amount of applications to the commission with more than doubled the amount of funding being asked. Each and every one of these organizations brings something to our community, and I felt honored being able to advocate for them these past few months. It's no surprise to anyone in this room that it's been hard for these organizations. Volunteering is down across the board for many that rely on them for their programs to succeed. Donations have dwindled due to rising costs in food and gas prices, and staff shortages are making it difficult for programs to run effectively, causing a rise in turnover and burnout. Regardless of these challenges, day in and day out, the hard-working leaders in these organizations, whether it be at For Tomorrow or the Russian Day Program at North Bellevue Community Center, do everything that they can to support our community. And when I say "community," it's not just the ones you think need the help but are getting it. It's also our students struggling with mental health issues, and our seniors needing rides to their doctor appointments, and everyone in between. While this funding helps these organizations out immensely, I encourage you to do more. We need to show up for our youth by advocating for more mental health resources within our community because we simply don't have enough. We need more LGBTQIAI resources for both youth and adults within our community. As a city with a school district that has over 104 languages spoken, we need resources to be able to, to be available in more languages throughout our city and schools. We need to show up for our BIPOC residents by advocating and bringing in more resources for affordable housing, education, food, and community support. Housing affordability is at the forefront of our community issues, and I know city council is working to help alleviate it. But remember, it isn't just who you might think is having a hard time affording to live here. It's people like me and my family that have been priced out of our area in Bellevue and had to make one of the hardest decisions to move elsewhere to buy our first home. It's the multi-generational families all living in a one-bedroom apartment together, hoping their rent stays the same. And it's everyone in between that don't have the tech jobs that allow some to afford the rising costs in rent. These organizations that are receiving funding are the links to helping our community flourish. And I encourage you to take the time to get to know how they all work separately and together with each other to reach all those that need their assistance. Our motto in Bellevue is diversity is our strength. And in order for us to back that up, we need to support all diverse populations living here in Bellevue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nathan Unger.
Thanks, appreciate your time tonight. You heard my wife speak earlier. She did a great job of covering our particular issue. I'm just here to add a little bit more color to that. So, first off, my name is Nathan Unger. I live at 200 111th Avenue, Southeast Bellevue, Washington. Here to... Sure, sure. I'm going to reset the phone and have you start with the substitution. All right, that's fine. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, here tonight, asking for the council to consider some sort of an exception to the land use code 2025M 040B3 for our permit application. Is it, the limits of the code do not otherwise allow for application to be, if the code does not otherwise allow for application to be approved. This is an urgent matter for us. We have a clock ticking on this where if it's not resolved, you know, by the middle of November, our permit in place resets and we start over at square one. You know, we've lived through the Sound Transit construction, and now that that's complete, it's troubling that the city's preventing us from starting on our own work. You know, there are four reasons why we believe our application should not be denied on these land use provisions. First, the intent of the code, as it was drafted, is to protect the residence property rights. You know, the council didn't want to force existing homeowners to have to deal with light rail right up in their backyard, and, you know, that's not this particular case. Second, there were some practical consideration, exceptions, rather, that were considered upon the drafting to allow residents and Sound Transit to agree on different terms as suited the property owner with less of a setback. In fact, in meeting minutes from February 19, 2023, don't detail why this practical exception didn't make it into the code. However, a, an earlier draft called the Public Hearing Draft Overlay provided flexibility for a minimum 15-foot buffer if there's agreement between Sound Transit and the property owners. Either Councilman Stokes was comfortable with a 15-foot setback if it was agreeable to the owner. Former Councilman Chalmanac indicated he wasn't sure whether 60 feet was the necessary distance, and Councilmember Robinson agreed that flexibility on the part of the homeowner was agreeable, but only after the light rail is built. And so, we appreciate that this was considered, and if Councilmember Robertson's bright line was that the station was built, we feel we've reached, it's reached that point as construction teams, tools, and equipment are no longer at the site. We should also note that the council debated setting the setback 30 feet versus 60, and at 30, we wouldn't have this issue. Third, light rail is set guideline supporting making of exceptions, and the Guiding Principle 3 said the city should advocate for exceptional mitigation throughout the project phases. Fourth, if the only substantive reason would be for the greater good and given that the property or the construction of the Sound Transit is complete, we feel that that has come to pass. Anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Anthony Havia, who's joining us virtually. Mr. Havia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello, my name is Anthony, and thank you so much, councilmembers. I'm speaking in support of increasing funding for Division Zero Initiative, which is wonderful. I've lived in downtown Bellevue for a year and a half now. I primarily get around through walking and biking in the downtown Belvedere Crossroads area. During that time, half of my bike rides have resulted in a car not observing the ride away, and a quarter of those close calls have resulted in a collision. I've been fortunate enough to come out of these collisions unscathed, besides a few bruises, but pedestrians and cyclists only make up 5% of the collision data from Division Zero, but 51% of the casualties. If we want Bellevue to be a safer city, we must invest in designing and engineering walkable spaces and protected bike lanes that do not overlap with car traffic. It is well-known that walkable, bikable cities improve the health outcomes for everyone living there, decreases car exhaust pollution that harms the young, reduces traffic by encouraging more folks to walk or bike, and gives the elderly of our city more independence so they can safely get around without a vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Sandra Falstar, and Mr. Falstar, I believe, is also joining us virtually. Mr. Falstar, can you hear me? Mr. Falstar, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm also here to voice my support for Vision Zero. I grew up in the Netherlands, a country that's known for being an early adopter of Vision Zero. And thanks to that, I could cycle to school by myself, starting at around the age of eight. And from ages 12 to 18, I cycled about seven miles to high school and then seven miles back again to my small town every day. And with me, hundreds of children would do the same. And when we got home from school, we could cycle to friends' places, to the shops, to soccer practice, et cetera. In Bellevue, however, it would in most cases be irresponsible and unsafe to let a child cycle around town, let alone for seven miles. And children that grow up here are mostly really dependent on adults to shuttle them around. And in my experience, it just does not have to be this way. So, I want to thank the city council for adopting a Vision Zero by 2030 plan, but we do have a lot of work left. And that is why I speak here today to call on the city council to allocate the budget that is necessary to achieve the goal of safe streets for everyone by 2030. My own daughter just turned two months old, and I hope that by the time she turns 12, she can safely cycle around Bellevue for seven miles too. Let's make it happen. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, the next speaker on the list is Sydney Unger.
My name is Lorelei Unger. I live at 211th Avenue Southeast Bellevue, Washington. This is my sister, Sydney. We moved out of our house this summer because we thought the remodel was going to start. I used to have my own bedroom, and we had three toilets. In the rental, we only have one bathroom, and I have to share a room with my brother and sister. It is, it's bad, but it was going to be okay if we were going to do the remodel. I don't know why the city changed the rules or told us the wrong rules. If they told us the right rules, we would not have moved out. If it, now it is extra bad because we have one toilet, five people, and a cat and a dog, but it's for no good reason. Please make the city go back to the rules they first said and allow us to do the remodel now, since we followed the rules. And changing the rules isn't fair, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Andrew Pardo. Mr. Pardo is joining us virtually, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect, your time begins now.
So, I'm Andrew Pardo. I live at 10915 Southeast Burst Street. I gotta say, Lorelei Unger is a really hard act to follow, but I will do my best. I'd like to thank the city for the work it's done to decrease death and injury from traffic violence in Bellevue. You know the talking points, traffic has gotten more dangerous since COVID. Our streets are less safe, even though fewer people are commuting. People are still being killed and injured by drivers. Council will continue this discussion with the preliminary operating budget tonight. As you discuss the city budget, I ask that you consider increasing the city's investment in Vision Zero. You know the talking points, I won't repeat them. I instead want to thank you for the investments we've made already. I live on the south side of downtown, and I work in the spring district. Biking is faster for me than driving, especially considering the time it takes to park and exit from the garage at work. But there's days when I just don't feel like I'm able to protect myself out there. Work gets stressful, my mind is somewhere else. On those days, I choose to ride in the semi-protected bike lane on 108 instead of taking the more direct route to my house. Because we invested in this route, I'm able to commute relatively safely on days when I don't feel at the top of my game. There are still risks to being out on the roads, of course, no matter how you travel. And it's especially risky when I'm not wrapped in a steel cage filled with airbags. People park in the bike lane all the time. A couple weeks ago, some guy got angry when I tried to pass him as he was pulling out of the bike lane. I guess I was in his way. And there's only so much protection that paint and flex posts can provide. But it's better, far better, to bike in Bellevue than it was when we first moved here 25 years ago, and I used to bike down Bellevue Way every morning. I appreciate the safer routes we've been able to build. I appreciate changes like leading pedestrian intervals on the bag buttons that we use to cross the streets. And so, I want to thank you, council, and transportation, and civic organizations like Complete Streets Bellevue for the work you've done to increase equity on the streets for people who aren't in cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pardo. We have reached the 30-minute time limit for oral communications. We did have one additional speaker, Mr. Zimmerman, who will be unable to speak this evening.
Okay, thank you.
That would close our outcomes.
No, I'm afraid we've come to the limit of our public comment.
No, but there's more people, don't speak five minutes. Two minutes, one, one and a half, you one minute.
Mr. Zimmerman, you do not, I'm sorry, you can come back next week.
And I just have a man, one more time, you do this straight, and I see you in court.
Okay, thank you.
No, I remember I come to this stand. I have all history, next meeting, and I cannot come. I cannot register by-
Mr. Zimmerman?
No, you understand I-
You're not on the agenda right now. So, we're going to move on, do I have a motion?
I just have a man, it's a pure discriminatory of disability.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor? Hi, okay, thank you.
Will you give me a chance to speak or not?
So, no, I'm sorry.
It will not permit, because three, two, four people don't speak.
I'm going to ask, yeah, okay. So, we have three study session items tonight. And Mr. Miyake, I'm going to let you introduce the first one. I'm going to excuse myself for just a moment, but I already know what you're going to say, so I'll be right back. And I'll put the deputy mayor in charge while-
Okay, I'll go ahead and, the mayor's already seen a bit of a preview on this, so for tonight's study session, as the mayor mentioned, staff will continue discussions on the proposed 2023 to 2024 operating budget as well as seven-year capital plan. Specifically, we have three budget servings on your study session agenda this evening. And the first serving is an overview of investments that support the council's priorities related to the city's environmental stewardship initiative, and second, the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion priority. Joining us this evening is Tony Call, our Finance and Asset Management Director, as well as Jennifer Ewing is Far Right, who is our Environment Stewardship Program Manager from the Community Development Department, as well as to her, Tony's direct right is Dr. Linda Whitehead, Chief Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer with the City Manager's Office. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Tony, to kick off the presentation.
And council members, as always, it's a pleasure back here to talk about our work this evening. This information is for information only. Our agenda this evening is we have three servings of the budget this evening. This is the first of three. It will address environmental stewardship, equity, inclusion, and access. And then, under separate cover, you'll have two additional servings with Development Services Rates and Human Services Commission Recommendations. Before I move on, I want to take just a minute and run through the pinwheel and when we've kind of seen those items come before council. So, the pinwheel represents the majority of our operating investments. So, starting at the 12 o'clock hour and running clockwise, on October 3rd, human services and small business growth with our American Rescue Plan Act was here to discuss those items. In addition, we discussed the Clean and Vibrant City Investments. Tonight, with growth and urbanizations, you'll hear from Development Services and their investment in permitting. Heading down clockwise, homelessness was before you on October 3rd with the investments then. Tonight, you have the 4 o'clock and the 6 o'clock hour, which is equity, inclusion, and access and environmental stewardship. Affordable housing heading up to the 8, 9 o'clock hour. Affordable housing was before you in the affordable housing presentation that was done on October 10th. And then, public safety, which a large investment in the preliminary budget, was done on October 3rd. So, kind of as a recap of where we've kind of been around the pinwheel. So, today, we'll finish up the pinwheel. Here's our budget milestone calendar. As you can see, coming up next on November 7th, which is in two weeks, is our public hearing. We're back before you on November 14th to discuss council direction to bring back a package to you for adoption tentatively on November 21st. So, we're heading towards the end of our budget time. When we finish our three presentations this evening, we will have presented the city manager's preliminary budget to you. A quick reminder of where we've been, and tonight, we kind of hit this with the pinwheel a minute ago, but tonight, you can see the items that are before you. And this is a slide we've spent very little time on thus far. So, I want to take a minute and go through all the actions it will take to adopt the budget. Since this is the last item before, and the city manager will have presented his preliminary budget, all of the items at this point should be either tonight or have come before you. So, starting at the top, Development Services Fees. You'll be hearing the Development Services Fee Presentation this evening. Utility Rates Ordinance was before you on October 10th, and so, you've received the information on the utility rates fee adjustments. The third item down, Human Services, CBDG, and Housing Stability will all be before you tonight with the Human Services Recommendations. On September 26th, when we brought forward the preliminary budget, that evening, we noted that in order to fund the investments, it would require a 0.01% increase in the Business and Occupation Tax. So, in order to adopt that, we will need a Business and Occupation Tax Ordinance. And then, of course, we always present forward the remaining bank capacity so that we ensure that we have our bank capacity being held at the county. The council will also need to set the 2023 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. This preliminary budget includes 2%, 1% councilmatic, and 1% bank. And then, of course, the final item on the budget is what we call the Umbrella Ordinance or the Total Biennial Budget Ordinance, which would include the appropriations by fund for all funds to ensure that we have appropriation authority for the 2324 budget. So, we'll probably hit those again in two weeks when we're here for the public hearing or on November 14th. So, with that, I am going to turn this evening to start with Environmental Stewardship with Jennifer. I'll pass you the remote.
Great, thank you, Director Call. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the Environmental Stewardship Budget this evening. We're really excited about what's included in the budget. So, the budget, including both the operating and the CIP, represents really a four times increase over the previous budget to help enable accelerated implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan. The budget proposals include actions which will focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions from our largest sources, buildings, and transportation. Tonight's presentation will focus on the budget proposals managed by the ESI team and does not go into detail into other funding, which is essential to achieving ESI goals, such as investments in pedestrian and bike infrastructure, recycling and organics collection, and enhancements to the natural environment. The two CIP proposals for our city operations will allow us to lead by example and take a significant step forward in achieving our goals of electrifying 50% of our light duty fleet by 2030 and reducing energy use in city facilities. This funding will put us on track towards achieving 75% of our goal for reducing emissions by 2030. On the community side, the funding will allow us to build capacity, create new programming, expand and expand existing programming to support energy efficiency in existing buildings, green building, renewable energy, and vehicle electrification. For community emissions, this funding will put us on track towards achieving 50% of the reductions needed from city-level efforts in addition to supporting state-led efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. For the community actions, the budget proposals, there's two proposals which cover our community-led actions, one in the operating budget and one CIP. And then, I'll talk about the two proposals that will help advance our municipal operations sustainability work. So, first, focusing on the two proposals which address our community actions. The focus on this funding is related, again, towards our two largest sectors in our greenhouse gas emissions, buildings, and transportation. With this funding, we really look to build upon some of the work we've started in the past two years, or almost two years since the plan was adopted, expanding some of that programming and then also adding a number of new programs and services. We'll expand the Clean Buildings Incentive Program, which was launched last year. This program is intended to support buildings in Bellevue in complying with the State Clean Buildings Act. We've already supported about a quarter of the buildings in Bellevue, over 50,000 square feet. And with this increased funding, this will allow us to support more buildings in Bellevue in getting compliance with the state law. And then, it will also help us support smaller buildings that are 20,000 square feet and greater, which will have to comply with the law further out this decade. For residential buildings, we'll continue to build and invest in the Energy Smart East Side Program with additional funding for energy efficiency retrofits for residents in single-family homes and affordable multifamily buildings with a particular focus on supporting low and moderate income residents in Bellevue. We also plan to use the funding to help us leverage some of the new federal and state grant and incentive funds that are coming out, and also to help our residents take advantage of some of these new funding opportunities, such as tax credits for making their homes more energy efficient. We'll also be able to engage in some new programming and planning efforts related to eco-districts, electric vehicles, new programming for solar, such as a solarized program, and also installing more electric vehicle charging stations for our residents. On the municipal operations side, there are two new proposals that are included in the preliminary budget. One is to allow for the installation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure, not just the charging stations, but all of the electrical capacity and everything that comes along with it. So, significant investment in our infrastructure to enable the greening of our fleet. And then, also, some significant investments in energy efficiency for some of our main city facilities, for City Hall, the Bellevue Service Center, and Bellevue Fire Stations. Also included in that CIP proposal is funding for, that'll allow us to put solar on City Hall. We received a grant for that. This will provide the 50% match that we need, which is exciting, along with expanding the solar array on the Bellevue Service Center. Plus, a whole bunch of other energy efficiency projects that are quite as exciting as solar, but as important, if not more so. And then, again, the investment in the EV charging infrastructure is really an essential first step in greening our fleet because we're kind of at capacity right now in terms of charging stations. So, to wrap thi- whoops, I'll just keep it there. To wrap things up, with this dedicated ongoing funding for implementing the ESI plan, we'll be able to make a significant step forwards towards achieving our goals for 2030. We will continue to monitor the impact of the ESI programs and their effectiveness, while also monitoring opportunities for additional grant funding through federal and state programs to further accelerate our work.
Yeah, that one, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of the DEI team. We are very excited that we see extra funding. So, I'll cut right to the chase, and the budget for the DEI program. And the reason why is I'm especially grateful and happy is because what this is indicating is that you recognize the importance of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility in the city of Bellevue. So, as I go through tonight, you will see the budget continues to advance the DEI work, effort, practice, and policy. In front of you on the screen, we're taking a look at the 2023-2024 DEI budget. The budget, we have increased capacity, which strengthening our impact. That increased capacity is a $400,000 amount. What we plan to do with that is update the 2014 Diversity Advantage Plan, including goals, strategies, and application level. Also, create and implement a citywide DEI training and education. We have started already rolling out the new organizational-wide DEI training program for staff, leadership, and the city's boards and commission. You might ask, well, why are we doing this? The reason is that we would like to develop a shared language, learning, and action around DEI work. This training is conducted by our DEI staff and with HR support. We also- We also will continue to develop and implement the budget equity framework with the goal of achieving the framework for our '25 and '26 budget proposal. Now, this is where they have been packing. The reason why we have this budget goal, the budget equity goal, is to establish a set of guiding questions that guide all city departments towards assessing how they propose budget benefits in or burden communities, specifically, communities of color and low-income communities, and provide a structured way to apply equity concepts to key decision-making in the city. So, basically, it will hold us all accountable. Increasing capacity.
I think you have one more clip to go. Nope. There you go. Sorry.
Thank you, Tommy. Building relationships and centering community voices. Community relations and transpar-- this is extremely important to us because we want to continue to pursue relationships with diverse community organizations to ensure transparent communication. Our goal is to seek greater community engagement. And we will do this by continuing to work with our external advisory boards, Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network, known as BDan, and centering communities of color to convene community dialogues on race, equity, and inclusion. Also, the creation of community-generated recommendations for changes, if needed, in city policies and practice. We are excited to share that this work will be supported by a national award-winning DEI leader, Joshua Barr, and will conclude in a community-generated and proposed focus on advancing racial equity, building trust and awareness across the city. We also will reach out to tribal government to initiate and strengthen formal relationships. Cross-cultural center. We're very excited about the cross-cultural center program. The last time we were in front of you to discuss the cross-cultural center was in May of 2022, this past May. The direction that was given by you to our team was the development of a cross-cultural programming, exploration of nonprofit partnership with future cross-cultural centers, and continue to explore space opportunity within the city of Bellevue. The investment of $500,000 over the next two years, we will hire a consultant to ensure consistent community engagement. Working with a consultant in this, on this project is extremely important because we will be working alongside the communities to design public gathering space. What we've heard in the short time from May to now, we've heard that the community has been asking for a safe, shared community space where people can gather, build community, and assess essential services and resources to support strong families and strong communities. The creation of this design, we will also bring, hire one additional person on the DEI team, so an administrator that will be responsible for the cross-cultural program for that consistency. We will also have a creation of a formal cross-cultural program. That's a tongue twister. Program initiative, including possible RFP process to offer incentives to community partners to develop new opportunities for cross-cultural engagement and activities. Ensuring this consistent communication in collaboration with our community partners throughout the project will also be essential, so keeping everyone in the community in the loop. Finally, you asked that we look at space, look at available space. So, what we're in the process of doing is conducting an analysis of all available space for ongoing, and that's the key word, ongoing, programming space. So, examples of the space that we're looking at. Here in the city, we're looking at all of our community centers. We're looking at the libraries. We're looking at the art museums, kids' quests, looking at our high schools. They have performing arts centers, and sometimes there is an example of underutilized space. Bellevue College, Main Bower Center, faith communities to offer a few. So, finally, I would like to close with our cross-cultural timeline for you. And this is just an opportunity for you to see the impact and the input that we've given over the cross-cultural program since May. So, spring of 2022, we have our direction from you. Summer of 2022, we begin the community engagement and relationship building. Going out to the community, observing cultural activities and programming has been a wonderful experience. But what I have noticed is that it's single cultures at a time. You have pockets of people meeting. It is not cross-cultural at all. So, we're prepared here, now that we're in the fall of 2022. We're prepared to hire a new FTE staff position and community engagement consultant if this budget is passed. The winter of 2023, our new staff will begin in the development of the cross-cultural program initiative. By spring of 2023, we will implement the cross-cultural programming initiative. And we will do all of this with our nonprofit partners involved in the space. So, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our first two segments of this evening. Again, coming up is human services, but development and development services fee update. And before we move on, Mayor, I turn it back to you for any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation. We're going to start with Councilmember Barxdale, followed by Lee Zahn, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Stokes Robertson, and then myself. So, Councilmember Barxdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentations, both topics that I'm really excited about, continuing to support and increased support for. I did have one question just for Dr. Whitehead. In terms of the DEI work in terms of nonprofit partners, is there funding available to host like a cultural-based organization summit? I mean, one of the things that I've heard is that sometimes they feel a little left out. And I think having a forum where they can better connect with the city, maybe through a summit. And I think it kind of goes along with what you mentioned in terms of bringing the cultures together. But just wanted to make sure that there's funding available for that.
That is a priority for us, so I would answer yes.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just asked for the cross-cultural. We'll go back to ESI as well.
You can do both.
Okay. Thank you. I want to go ESI first. Good job. I think we are making reasonable, good progress compared to before. The increase in budget is a significant, good step. I just want to be specific on a couple of items. One is electrification. I know that the city is working on transforming our fleet, right, to electric. So, I want to know what's the status on that. And you talk about, you know, charging stations, so we know we're working on that. But in terms of our city's fleet, you know, what is a quick summary? If you don't have it, you can give it to me later, but I just want to know. Because I think that the people in the city, they are very interested to even provide vehicles for us to try and borrow and develop. So, I think there's opportunity to do that, so I want to know what's the status. Let's see, what else? Second, it's a solar, a polar, solar, solarized program. We know we're going to do green building, commercial space. How about residential, polar panels? A number of years ago, we did that, you know, in a small, limited basis because I know we need to have money to subsidize to make it work. But that might be something considered because I believe that with the cost going up, everything, energy price, people are definitely more conscientious, conscious, wanting to have ways to keep the cost down. So, that might be something you can, don't need to say it now, but if you have, you can say a few things. Do you have something to add now, or listen?
Sure, yeah. Just to respond to both of those. I'm forgetting the numbers off the top of my head in terms of the, how many electric vehicles we have. We do have quite a few hybrid vehicles in the fleet. And we do have some charging stations at our city facilities. So, yeah, the next step really is to install the more charging stations. And then, that will enable us to, you know, whoops, as we need to replace our vehicles. We can start replacing them with electric vehicles. I think you mentioned something around kind of helping residents learn about electric vehicles. And I think something we did in the past, a number of years ago, a ride-and-drive event we've been wanting to do for a while, we kind of put that on hold due to COVID. But I think now with some additional resources, we can maybe look at doing something like that next year. I think that is a great way to introduce people to electric vehicles. And then with the--
I was asking more the solar, solar.
Yeah. And then with the solarized program, yeah, that would be aimed more for our residents for, in primarily, single-family homes, although I think we could look at how that might work for multifamily buildings.
Yeah. So, thank you. So, I have an idea of how many city fleets are being converted to electric. Okay? You don't need to tell me now.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we can follow up.
In terms of cross-cultural, my time is running out. I really appreciate the presentation. That's great. I really was very, very impressed and happy of the progress that we made. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. And I think you're right on. You know, we're looking at really cross-cultural. We have lots of culture programs here, but they are all separate. So, I think that does meet our goal, so you make a lot of good sense. And I like the fact that you are getting the staff pay attention, focusing on it. I'm glad the consultant that actually can help us, you know, provide more directed, more focused technical support. I think that's important because when you work with communities, you're working with a lot of goodwill citizens. But I think we need to have real professions to help to do that. So, I like that a lot. And also, working with partners, I really like that a lot also because the partners are either corporate partners or other partners. They have a lot of interests and needs that will help to support their employees. And I think they definitely, as part of the good corporate citizen, you know, I think that would be a very good way to move toward. So, I like your point that we are slowly developing programs as we see that bringing people together. At the same time, we are working toward, looking at what kind of facility that might be necessary because I believe that's important. We recognize people want to find a place that they can call home, that they feel belong, that they can identify with, rather than just going from a place to place to place to place and never know what happened tomorrow, next day. So, I think it's got to be something people can call home. So, I really think that is a good focus. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm super excited too about both of these topics. I think it's so foundational to accelerate our environmental efforts as well as the people-centered work around equity. So, I'm really excited to see this budget. I do have a couple of questions. One is, as we think about this budget going to 2024 on the sustainability side, I know in the summertime, we saw the wedge analysis. We saw that we were not quite reducing greenhouse gas to the degree that we need to. So, if we forecast to the end of 2024 based on this budget, where are we forecasting that we will be in terms of bringing down greenhouse gas amongst those areas? And maybe that's part of the budget book of coming back because I would like to understand with these commitments, where we think we will be by the end of 2024 and whether we're on track. I like the fact that we're both focusing on municipal as well as community with both solar and EV, as well as residential and commercial. So, excited about that. On the, on the ESI, or sorry, on the DEI part, I'm curious about the community-generated recommendations for changes in city policies and practices. Where are we in that journey with the CCC group? And is, do we already have some of those recommendations where some of this funding would go towards implementing? Or are we, where are we in the timeline for creating those community-generated recommendations? And then, my other question is, I absolutely agree that increasing community engagement and participation is going to be so key in all of the things we do, as well as activating public spaces. My hope is that we also look at City Hall as one of the places where I think on the weekends and being able to activate those spaces will be really important. So, as we look at the funds, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, does that funding also create the staff to be able to host different events or be able to keep the lights on on the weekend to be able to activate spaces like City Hall? Or is that funding actually going to be in parks or community services or other spaces? I was just trying to get a better understanding of, with the money, how that will be spent and how that might work.
Well, a short answer is that the money will be spent in a very thoughtful way. And the money will be spent to connect with the goals that have been set. So, yes, if there is an event that CCC or BDan would like to host and it connects with our goal, then we would definitely look at our pot of money and make certain we're spending it in a wise way. And as far as where is CCC? CCC is on the right path of connecting with the communities and being a voice. We are also seeing the wisdom in connecting with BDan as well. BDan has been a part of the city's external outreach for many years. I actually was a part of BDan, so very excited about that, and I see the connection. So, we will be utilizing CCC, which is extremely important, for some topics that's only for them. And then, where we can collaborate, we will be doing that also.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, the question on the ESI.
Yeah, I think maybe we can follow up in terms of like the specifics. I think just if we want to see where we're at at the end of 2024, you know, we really won't know that until the middle of 2025, once we do the greenhouse gas emissions analysis. So, it's, yeah, I guess maybe not quite in sync with the next budget cycle. But yeah, I think we'll have to follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for great presentations tonight. I'll start with ESI first. That's a value statement right there, increase ESI funding by 10.1 million. That's just outstanding to see. And environmental stewardship is so important to residents in this city. As judged by last weekend during the Arbor Day celebration, where we had a significant amount of residents come out in the rain, get their slickers on, their raincoats to help us, you know, put some more trees in action in our community. And it was a pleasure to be a part of that along with some of my colleagues. So, that's really great to see. And I appreciate the comments on the EV infrastructure and the focus on that. You know, we all want to get to greening our fleet. But without that infrastructure in place first, let's not put, you know, the cart before the horse here. Let's really make sure that that, and I have a follow-up question on that, Jennifer, in terms of what is the goal with that infrastructure? Is that X number of stations? Is that X number of output in terms of, or how quickly they can charge our fleet? What does that look like in terms of our goals in order to be able to charge our entire fleet? I'll stop right there for a second if you want to answer that.
Sure. Yeah. So, as part of the Green Fleet strategy that we worked on with a consultant that works with cities and organizations on this sort of thing, that I guess I would say the goal was trying to figure out how can we sort of most cost-effectively put the infrastructure in place so it will meet our operational needs in a cost-effective and efficient manner? So, yeah, that was sort of the goal. A lot of our vehicles, you know, can just charge overnight. They don't need to be charged in 30 minutes. you know, can just charge overnight. They don't need to be charged in 30 minutes. You know, we can use the Level 2 charging station. So the plan kind of looked at sort of the mix of different types of, of charging stations and all of that.
But we have a firm analysis of how many we need specifically in order to charge.
Deputy Mayor, I can help a little bit here, only because I have cheat sheet notes. So if we could just acknowledge that that's what I have. So at City Hall, we'll end up with 46 shared start charging stations, and another six fast charging stations. So that's just in our sitting hall parking garages, between the employee garage and the police garage. That's going to help us get most of our fleet, especially our police cars, as well as what I would call our fleet, if you needed to borrow a car at the city, all of those types of cars. Over at the BSC, we'll have 56 dedicated charging stations, another four fast charging stations, again, allowing cars to be charged and moved on, and it should be able to accommodate our fleet. So we do have analysis that says that we are, we are certainly gearing up for the right thing.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitehead, thank you so much for such a strong focus on another important value of the city, and the diversity being our strength, and, and the, the deepening of that impact within the community in terms of relationships, and in terms of the, the programming, the cross-cultural programming, which looks fantastic. I love the timeline here. Just a quick question regarding the nonprofit partner potentially. What, what does that look like, or what might be the ideal nonprofit that might, if you've sketched that out already, maybe, maybe you're not, you're still thinking about that one. But I'm just kind of curious, because some people watching tonight might be in, in a position where they might want to apply to that. But what does that nonprofit look like? What would be a good partner for us for that?
Well, a good partner in that field would be someone who are aligned with our goals and our values. So that would be number one. Number two, we would be looking for a nonprofit that themselves boasts operating, operating budget of a million dollars in excess. We also would be looking for a nonprofit, and then as we look at their board, we would be looking for board members of, with influence, is how I would say that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes. Is he still with us?
He was.
I don't see the picture anymore. Why don't we go on to Councilmember Robertson? We'll come back to Councilmember Stokes.
I'll be brief. Yeah, you know, our budget is our biggest policy document, and it, it says what we value. And the two presentations tonight, I guess we're putting our money where our values are, and I think that that's wonderful. So really pleased, don't have any issues, have a couple of comments, though. I think that, or I hope, and I think, I think you've confirmed this before, Jennifer, that when we're converting to the electric vehicles, that we are thinking about what our backup plan is, to make sure that we have vehicles that can be used in the Cascadia Rising type situation. So whether we're considering whether some should be hybrid, whether we have a backup source if the grid goes down for any extended period of time, our police are going to need to get places, even if the grid is down, and especially if the grid is down. So what are we doing with regard to making sure that as we make this conversion, we are making sure that the new vehicles can serve the city, and do the people's business, or help our staff do the people's business in the event that we have a massive grid failure?
Yeah, that's definitely part of the consideration. And one of the budget proposals, I think that's separate from the EV charging infrastructure, is to expand the, or replace the backup generators at the Bellevue Service Center. I think, anyway, so yeah, I think ensuring that backup power is, is essential. And did you want to speak to that as well?
Sure, I can speak a little bit more. So as we consider purchasing new vehicles, and we're looking on the market about whether the, the market, the vehicles on the market will fit, will fit the needs of the city, we think about all those attributes. What happens if this happened? What happens if that happens? Can a truck carry a load that's big enough in it to make the truck useful? Or is it only working if the truck bed is empty, which is not very useful to us? So we really think about what's the use of the vehicle. We look at the market and see what's the right vehicle to meet that use, to make sure that all of our vehicles, if they are electrical, can get up and down the steep hills we have, because we've got several areas that have high heels. We have other areas that not so pretty, they're flat, easier to get through. So I think it's a whole host of things that we think about. And if you want something more detailed of what those, what those attributes are, I certainly can get back to you with that.
No, that's fine. I assumed that we were thinking about it, because we have such great staff, but I just wanted to make sure that we were. And are we replacing vehicles as they meet the end of their useful life? Or are we surplusing them early?
Well, it kind of depends on the vehicle. What we try to do is find and make sure we're surplusing them, or we can get the best value for the vehicle that is on the market. So some of them, that makes the most sense for the end of all useful life. So for instance, a fire truck, there's not a lot of value to that, other than us using the fire truck, right? Some of our other vehicles, such as our more, what we would consider more run-around fleet vehicles, where you'd see, it makes a lot of sense for us to surplus those before the five-year mark, because the value is higher, and we can get a newer vehicle and a newer model that helps meet the needs of the city. So it, it works both ways.
Okay, great. And I, and I'm sure that with the price of gas right now, and the price of used cars, retiring them early in place of an electric might be just the right thing for many, many reasons. And then I just wanted to make a comment about the DEI. I think that looking at the space across the city is really smart. I know that we do the registration and reservations for not just city fields. For example, we handle the reservations for some fields owned by the school district. And that makes us like the one-stop shop. I think that this is a really good way to do it, because number one, it gets, gets access to these kinds of events out into the community where people are. And it also brings people that are connected to the individual non-city-owned properties, whether it's a church, or Bellevue College, or a library, or school. It pulls more people into those events as well. So I think it works both ways, and is a really efficient way to provide the greater public access to more public space and more events. And I think that that's just, I just wanted to give a huge kudos for that. I think it's wonderful, wonderful progress. So thanks.
Thank you.
So I don't think we have Councilmember Stokes back yet.
He's having connectivity issues in his phone. Back online as soon as he.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and speak briefly. So I, I knew we were serious about DEI when I saw where your office was, right across from the city manager. And I really appreciate how we've elevated this, and made it a real integral part of all the work that we do. I would only ask that we utilize BDan and the 3C groups to weigh in on some of the board and commission work that we're doing. I know that the Parks Board recently came up with some guidance for naming parks. And I would love to have those groups weigh in on that as well. So that's my ask for that. And then with the ESI, great, great news. I wonder if that means we're going to be more able to achieve our 2030 goals, which is kind of what Councilmember Zahn asked. And I don't know if you can answer that.
The additional funding will definitely help us take a big step forward towards achieving those goals. Yeah, so we're excited about that. I think, you know, we will continue to monitor sort of the impact of this funding, also, you know, look to bring in additional funding through state or federal grants, you know, so I think it'll be an ongoing process to track our progress. But this will definitely, it is definitely a significant investment.
Yeah, that's great. And I see Councilmember Stokes. I don't hear him yet. If you can hear me, Councilmember Stokes, feel free to make comments on the ESI and the DEI budget.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Good, good. One of these days, what I want is to actually have connectivity that really works all the time. So can we, can we put that in the budget somewhere? No, it's been very interesting conversation, just a few things on this. One I had, I'm sorry, I've got, I think I have a real coal, you know, one of those things we used to have before we had all these other things.
Sorry to hear that.
So on the environmental things, just a question about, I think it's really good, we're talking about 75% of our goal to, to funding for that for 2030, right?
Yes, yes.
So my question is, what's the plan for the other 25% going to the goal?
Yeah, I think, again, that's where we kind of monitor the, the impact of this funding, for both the, you know, the community actions and the municipal operations. And then, you know, I think in the future, we'll, you know, review the budget and the impact it's having, and also kind of track how we're doing towards our, our goals, and then can make recommendations if any additional funding is needed.
Yeah, no, that's good. That, that's what I wanted to hear, because I think that's good to add this, so people have a sense that, you know, we really are working towards meeting our goal. And really good presentation. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it. So that's, that's good. Dr. Whitehead, I, and again, it's a lot of stuff here, and I don't want to get into too much in it. I think it's really good work. A couple of things. One of the things is very interesting. What we're finding out more and more is that actually we have a lot of places around the city that would serve communities, not just one, one building somewhere in part Bellevue. And we could actually serve a lot more people by looking at all of these facilities and groups together. So I think that's, that's very interesting. And, you know, we can work all those things together. But I appreciate, and it's something we haven't had in the past, is really taking a hard look at what is actually out there, as opposed to what people kind of think should, is, is out there and what we want to do. So it's, I think it's good progress in terms of getting our assets together, and getting the groups together. And, you know, the, I mean, there are so many different groups, you can count them on both hands and still not have gotten there. So I think that's a really good advance forward. The, the other thing is that, and it's just listening to, to the presentation, I understand right now that the focus is on the multicultural, and the, basically, you know, groups that have not been as involved, they're not as much in, in all these efforts, and now understanding how we can work together. But the other thing I hope we don't lose is that we focus on this, and that we, we don't develop a better, more inclusive, more, actually one that will actually get the whole community working together. And so this doesn't become, well, this is a program that is, kind of has a certain, well, it's not bringing everybody together. So I think the, the whole, the piece of equity and inclusion, hopefully will begin, will at some point be all, all people who live in Bellevue, as opposed to, like we have it now, it's separated, where you have certain groups that have been dominant, you know, build the whole thing. We're trying to change that. But let's change it to something that is more inclusive, more active, and actually serves all the citizens. And I think we, we can get there too. I really appreciate the work that's done. And I hope we get the, not, that the, the consultants are looking at this as a, if it's multicultural, includes everybody in the city. And I think that's, that's the point that will actually get us to having an inclusive society. And it's just amazing work. And I'm looking forward to actually looking at it and having our conversations going forward.
Thank you.
That's, that's about all I was thinking. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to call for a break here, and we will reconvene at 22.
And turn it over to Tony Sparza, Assistant Director. She is also joined with Leslie Miller, the Human Services Manager. Both are from the Parks and Community Services. We're also have Benjamin Piper here, who is the Chair of the Human Services Commission, who will participate in the presentation as well. That'll turn it over to the staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am pleased to be here with you this evening with Human Services Commission Chair Ben Piper, and Assistant Director Tony Sparza, to share the fruit of the tremendous work of the Commission, their funding recommendations for 2023 and 2024. Tonight's staff seek feedback on preparing ordinances approving the Human Services Commission recommendations for the 2023-24 Human Services Fund, the 23-24 Behavioral Health and Housing Related Services Housing Stability Program Funds, and Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Final adoption will take place as part of the overall adoption of the city's budget in November. This evening, we will review the process undertaken by the Commission to form the recommendations for the three separate funding sources, the Human Services Fund, Housing Stability Program, and CDBG. Commissioner Chair Piper will now provide an overview of the preparation for the funding cycle undertaken by the Commission and staff, and the application review process.
Thank you, Leslie, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and member, Councilmembers. Thank you so much for inviting us to, to present this evening. If we could, thanks for that. Excited, thank you so much. Both staff and the Commission spent over a year preparing for this current funding cycle. Staff and Commissioners began working on the Human Services Needs Update in early 2021. This is a process that ensures that the city hears from the community at large, consumers of human services, and the agencies that provide services, and that it has gathered updated data. Staff have also been working with city staff from neighboring cities to find and build relationships with small and emerging organizations, to ensure that all, to ensure all agencies that provide important services to the community have the opportunity to contract with the city to provide critical services for Bellevue residents. Staff also offered an information session in the fall of '21. So new applicants or agencies with new staff understood the expectations of agencies contracting with the city, so that they had time to become prepared to apply for it. Pleased to say that the outreach to the community to small and new nonprofit organizations worked. The Commission reviewed an unprecedented number of applications this cycle. At the same time, the Human Services Commission was hearing from organizations and subject matter experts during our meetings, to be sure that we understood the current challenges and needs of both residents and the agencies that serve them. In addition, we participated in Equity Lens training with the other four Eastside Commissions, and this was hosted by the City of Redmond. Once the application opened, staff assisted agencies with technical assistance, either by video call or email, as requested. The next slide, thank you. The Human Services Commission is very grateful for the City Council's continued support to allow an updated review of community needs every two years. The information gathered and analysis provided enables the Commission to review applications with a data-informed understanding of the needs of the community. The incredibly high number of applications required an intensive investment of time from our Human Services Commissioners. The Human Services Commission is typically scheduled to meet twice per month. However, in order to complete this particular review process, the Commission needed to add additional meetings, and to extend the length of other meetings. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our Commissioners for their commitment to our community and to its residents. We also experienced an unprecedented amount of community engagement and public comment during our review. We heard from the community, including residents and providers, how vital the services funded by the city are to individuals' and families' well-being. We also held three public hearings, and we'd like to thank the community for their support and for their engagement. Throughout our review process, the Commission reviewed applications with an Equity Lens. In particular, the Commission considered the value that new and emerging agencies are bringing to our community, and also considered the guidance from Council to fund agencies that are trusted messengers for diverse members of our community. The Council's investment in human services throughout the pandemic has been tremendous, and has ensured that our most vulnerable community members have received support. I am proud of the recommendations being presented to you this evening, and the ongoing impact that this will make in our community. I'm now going to turn it over to Leslie to provide an overview of the three funding sources.
Thank you, Chair Piper. I will now review each of the three funding sources. Detailed recommendations for each source are included in your packet. The first funding source we will review is the Human Services Fund. The Human Services Fund is automatically adjusted on an annual basis, using a formula that includes the local CPIU, plus 1% increase for population growth. In addition, Amazon made generous donations.
In addition, Amazon made generous donations to the Human Services Fund in 2020 and 2021. The last portion of these funds are included in the 2023-24 Human Services Fund. The City of Bellevue has been the only suburban jurisdiction to provide a cost of living increase the second year of contracting. COLA increases have been a need addressed by advocates for a strong human services network. The COLA for agencies in 2024 is 4.7%. The commission's recommendations for the Human Services Fund support a broad range of services for community members such as housing stability, food security, supportive relationships, violent survivor services, behavioral health, education, and employment supports. The city received an unprecedented 136 applications, up from 106 from '21-'22. The requests were more than twice as much of the funding available at over $10 million. We continue to reduce the burden on agencies seeking funding by sharing a single online application with 15 other suburban jurisdictions. Efficiencies will continue for the contract awardees through the use of shared invoice and reporting forms. The largest funding requests from a single area were from shelters. A total of 119 programs, including 32 currently unfunded programs, are recommended for funding. The City of Bellevue Comprehensive Plan identifies five goal areas related to human services. The Human Services Commission recommendations for funding related to the Human Services Fund provide services in all five areas. Recommendations for programs addressing his housing stability and food security make up almost 47% of the available funding. The commission recommends funding 28 programs that help develop and provide supportive relationships for residents. Six program applicants requested support to assist survivors of abuse and violence. The commission recommends funding 14 programs that support community members' mental and/or physical health. Finally, the commission recommends funding 17 programs that support community members pursuing education and employment. The largest support mechanism for furthering education and employment goals is childcare. The second funding source we will review this evening is the Behavioral Health and Housing Related Services, part of the Housing Stability Program. The source of this funding is the 0.1% sales and use tax that the City of Bellevue began collecting following the council enacting Resolution Number 9826. State RCW 82.14.530 allows jurisdictions to collect the sales and use tax for housing and related services. In July of this year, the council adopted a framework for an ongoing housing stability program. In this framework, 15% of the revenue is set aside for behavioral health and housing-related services. The total funding available is 1.75 million. Just over $1.63 million is 15% of the projected sales and tax revenue for 2023. This funding is augmented with 120,000 of previously unspent Behavioral Health 1590 funding. The city received 16 applications for this Housing Stability Program, funding for Behavioral Health and Housing Related Services. This included 13 applications from providers that were funded via our initial application process in 2021 and three new providers. The commission recommends that the council fund all 16 programs. Behavioral Health Services requests were received from several types of service providers: homeless shelter, providers of culturally specific services designed to meet historically underserved population needs, and a housing provider. The funding requests for housing-related services, which includes case management and employment services, were almost evenly split between services intended to assist people to remain housed and services to support people becoming housed. These recommendations will make a significant impact in supporting our residents who are experiencing homelessness or housing instability achieve stability. The third funding source we will review this evening is the CDBG funds. CDBG is funded by the federal government and administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The funding amount identified here is only an approximate because HUD cannot determine the city's entitlement until after the federal budget becomes law. We are using our 2022 entitlement of $807,000 as a placeholder. The total also includes an estimate of potential loan paybacks from the City of Bellevue Home Repair Loan Program, which are 0% loans provided to low and moderate income households. We are estimating just under $250,000 in paybacks for 2023. Finally, we recommend reallocating unspent funding from prior years. CDBG funds, funding pays for a much more limited array of program areas that support low and moderate income residents, which are those with incomes up to 80% of area median income. HUD also allows a portion of the funds to be used for the city's costs for administration and planning. This is very important because of the numerous requirements and record-keeping that need to be met in order for the city to remain in compliance. CDBG funding will be allocated in three categories. 15%, a cap set by HUD, will go to a human services application received from the general fund applicants. Please note that because of the 15% cap, the city does not have the option to allocate all its CDBG funding to cover the unfunded Human Services Fund requests. The city received applications for microenterprise support programs and to support housing repair programs. The proposed funding levels for these programs make up 65% of the recommendations. The commission recommends funding three organizations providing microenterprise support in the community. These organizations hold specific expertise in supporting some of the most marginalized and underserved residents, including residents of color. Our human services team will be providing a learning cohort for these organizations to develop best practices for microenterprise programs. We have also invited a member of the city's economic development team to participate. The city operates a housing repair program for low and moderate income households and has traditionally contracted with King County Housing Authority, or KCHA, to manage our major housing repair projects and with Sound Generations to provide minor repairs. Staff identified a gap for needed repairs that fell between the major services provided by KCHA and the minor services provided by Sound Generations. As a result, we would like to add Habitat for Humanity as a partner to our housing repair program to ensure that residents with medium-sized housing repair projects are served. These funds provide critical services that ensure that low and moderate income residents can stay in their homes and develop businesses in Bellevue. The remaining 20%, a cap set by HUD, is recommended to go to planning and administration. These funds support the efforts of staff to, one, ensure the city is compliant with all federal regulations and support agencies receiving CDBG dollars to be compliant as well. And, two, allow staff to conduct the appropriate planning and community outreach to ensure the funding is meeting the most pressing community needs. Council made significant investments to support human services activities in '21-'22 to address the impacts of the pandemic. Tonight, we provided recommendations for three human services funding sources: the city's Human Services Fund, the Behavioral Health and Housing Related Services Housing Stability Program, and CDBG funding. On October 3rd, we presented to you a potential investment of an additional $10 million in ARPA funding to address remaining critical areas that impact the health and stability of Bellevue residents. Together, these items would provide a continuation of strong human services investments in '23 and '24. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to ensure that all Bellevue residents have the resources they need to thrive. I will turn it over to Chair Piper for concluding remarks.
Thank you, Leslie. On behalf of the entire Human Services Commission, I would like to thank the city council for your support in building a strong foundation for human services so that all of Bellevue's residents can thrive and reach their full potential. At this point, Leslie, Tony and I are happy to take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I will, I will go first, not because I have the gavel now, but I am the liaison to the Human Services Commission, so that titles me to go first. And then we'll go to Councilmember Stokes and then we'll go to Councilmember Lee and kind of go down, go down the line here. So, great presentation, thank you, Leslie, thank you, Tony, thank you, Chair Piper, and the entire Human Services Commission for your work on these recommendations tonight during a very difficult period, probably some of the most stressful, challenging times to ever be on this commission, as the needs of our community during this post, during and post-pandemic have mounted those needs. But we, I believe that the commission has handled it with such grace and professionalism while always keeping in mind what we can do to improve the lives of those folks who live and call Bellevue home. So, as we saw there, due to the, the volume of applications and the multiple funding sources, commissioners needed to add additional meetings, extend meetings. They had to put a lot of work into this and I really appreciated the fact that every single application took the time, didn't just go the easy route and go with those pre-existing agencies that we've worked well before and, and we know they can deliver. But Chair Piper, as you mentioned, you know, constantly seeking further community engagement, trying to get to those communities that were maybe previously underserved or are not heard or needed different services, or the services that we were offering for whatever reason weren't being communicated to them. So that was really important work. You know, and the community's voice is so, is so vital in this process as well and that engagement was, 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 was huge. And as noted, you know, we saw that significant increase in, in the members and the agencies during those meetings, the awareness of the vital impact being made by, by the commission and, and in our community every day. And, you know, I constantly mention the fact that we had that 136 applications, 30, 30, 30 more than previously and, and twice as much in terms of the asked versus what we actually had available. So that tells you the situation that, that we find ourselves in right now. So I'm personally very excited about the commission's recommendations here, including funding for, for these agencies, again, that have served us, you know, long-term and served our community very well, as well as those newly funded agencies with many holding and expertise and serving very diverse members in our community. And although they're new, we're still holding them to the same standards. You know, another aspect of this commission that I really appreciate is that we want to make sure that we're maximizing those dollars because they're in such need right now. And then really appreciate the fact on, on touching on the recently implemented sales tax for our Housing Stability Program, really important work that's being done there. And, you know, I think together, the city's investment in these funds will really support our residents across, you know, the human services spectrum in our city and the funding sources will make a significant impact on the needs of our community. And the potential investment of that additional $10 million that could come from ARPA, funding into human services for 2023-24, that'll be critical areas as well that we could help fund and support the health and stability of other residents as well. So I will stop there, but no questions from me, but thank you again so much for all of your work and all the commissioners, even those of the ones that can't be here tonight. But Chair Piper especially appreciate your, your leadership on the, on the commission as well, so thank you. And with that, I will turn it, turn it over to Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I really appreciate your, your comments on it. You really did a good job, I mean, you, you know, putting this whole thing in context and it's exciting to see this and the work that the Human Services Commission has done these last couple of years has really been great, so much appreciated. I guess what I'm just looking at is, I mean, I've always wondered about when we do some of this funding, this based on, you know, a system that has a certain amount of money and we have, kind of go through planning and applications and all, and we made a lot of strides in pushing this because we all know the needs are not being met completely. So what I'm interested in is us looking at, you know, going forward is, you know, to look at ways to increase both participation by groups that need services but really somehow don't quite find how to do it and the funding, you know, down the line. Because, I mean, these are our residents, these are people, and it makes, anything that helps this makes the city even better. And the question is, you know, what is the size of the gap, the real size of the gap between the serious needs of our community funding and what do we have from the current system? I think that's something going forward, we would appreciate looking at, but, you know, with what we have, which is a great program and will develop, excellent work both from the commission and, again, Deputy Mayor, appreciate your leadership on this and I'm glad we're able to do what we're doing and I just, you know, hope we can continue to find out ways to, to do even better. And again, appreciate the staff and, and the commission and that's, this is a, this is a feel-good thing and I hope we can work and feel even better next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Lee?
Well, thank you, Chair Piper. Thank you for your presentation. I've always said, of all the commissions, a human service commission is probably the most challenging, the most difficult. And that's the reason why we give the commission, you volunteers, the worst job there is, the hours you go through, you know, looking at to meet needs. And we know that there's no way to meet all the needs you have. I just heard Deputy Mayor mention how many applications you received. And so yours, you know, short, but, so I want to thank the whole commission and you for taking the time really seriously, as everybody understands, working very hard to do the best you can to make the choices. Decisions are to make anyway, choices are hard. When you are asked to make choices like this, it's even more difficult. But I do appreciate some of the things you are doing, you, the, you're having different languages now included in the, allow the applicants to use. Oftentimes, you know, to sort out the, the, the applications, make it easier, you come up with the, our conditions, stricter ways to discourage people applying. But now you're opening it up and as we know, pandemic has presented, created a lot more challenges, a lot more needs even before. And so, and also our, and it brings out a lot of the needs that we never seen before, you know? And so the council has been talking about during the pandemic period, how to build capacities so that we, you said that before, have people, the messengers who can communicate with the people who are in need, that we don't see some of these needs because we don't have the right passengers, messengers. They don't know how to approach, how to open the doors. So I think that's really good. So my question is, your, your grant, your, your people who you, you grant the money to, how many are new providers that's never been, you know, benefited this before? Do we have new, new people, new providers? Because of the good program you set up, language encouragement?
We have 32 new programs that are being funded.
Yes.
There's a few, little fewer number of providers just because there's a couple, I think, that are being funded for more than one.
Okay.
But it's right around 30.
Yeah, but you do have new providers who never then have had accepted money from before and they are eligible because of the way that you have structured your program. That's good. So I like that. So thank you for doing that. That's a real demonstration of your success. And that really provides the capacity building that we're talking about. You've got more capacity to provide more services to more people who have never had the opportunity to get it before. So I think that's good. So you're meeting new needs. One, one, one of the thing is, before, you know, I say one more time, I want to thank you, the commission, for all the work you do, is I noticed on the CDBG program, you know, which is actually now a smaller piece from the federal government, you have part of the program has a planning and administrate, administration piece that amounts almost 20% of the total. Why is so high? And can we, you know, because it seems to be, ah, just. And can we, you know, because it seems to be, ah, just curious. Is there any way we can do something to get more money to the people instead of planning and administration?
We will certainly take a look. I will say, we are challenged by the number of requirements that the federal government has, and so, I would say that I think we are, we try to be really good stewards of the money, and we agree that as much money going out the door as possible, but if we aren't successful in making sure the dollars go out properly, then we will have issues. So, there are a number, just not just administration, but also planning requirements that we are fulfilling. So that is traditionally how the funding is used, to provide, pay for the staff to be good stewards.
Yeah, so maybe this is, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Lee, I was just going to add a new innovative thing that staff are doing with some of those dollars this next year as well, so you might have noticed that there are three micro enterprise programs that are being recommended for funding, and so, with the council's priority of increasing funding to new, small, emerging agencies, the way that's being made possible is by staff offering a cohort to support those agencies to be successful with their CDBG funding. So, it's very rigorous for staff, it's also very rigorous for agencies, and we wanted to make sure to open that door for them. Having those dollars for planning and administration increases access for those agencies as well.
Good, good, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Tony, Leslie, and Ben, for the presentation and all the hard work, and welcome, Leslie, to the city. I think that you've been here for a few months, and we're excited to have your expertise. This is a tough challenge and task, right, because I believe that we ask the organizations to submit for what they need, and they indeed did, which is more than double what we have capacity to fund, so glad to see that we've got the COLA in 2024, so that part is good. I'm still a little troubled by only being able to fund less than half of the ask. I'm trying to envision how organizations that are trying to provide a service can provide it with only, you know, 20% of the funding, 50% of the funding, 75% of the funding, because part of that funding is for their own staff, and being able to pay sufficiently to both recruit and retain. So, I am trying to better understand what else we can be doing as a city to support that. You know, I appreciate the efficiencies of the application being good for 15 cities, and single invoice, and all of that, and yet, when I think about holistically, looking at 2022 and 23, we are holistically 1.7 million less in total investments going out, that was the one slide that you had, and I'm thinking about the, so how do we help with that shortfall? What are the other partners that we might be able to look for? Are there any other grant programs that do matching that we can find? I read in the packet that we did get several million dollars from Amazon to support human services. Are there other businesses that are in our area that sees that level of gap and can help step in? So I guess my ask would be, can we shake the trees a little bit more to see what else is possible? You know, earlier tonight, we heard about funding, very necessary funding for DEI as well as sustainability. I am trying to better understand, as we do those trade-offs, seeing this level of a gap with people still struggling, what else can we do? So, while I really appreciate you squeezing every penny, I guess I would just ask whether there's anything else we can do, because that shortfall does seem to be quite substantial, and trying to envision how, if any of us were asked to do a task, and we said it's going to take X, and we say, oh, well, we really only have money for Y. So, my last question would, or those are more comments, I guess my question would be, I know we also look to make sure that all of the requests are, meet the requirements and eligibility, so if we were to look at how much was needed to be granted that satisfied the requirements of our criteria, is that most of the 10 million, or is it something quite a bit less?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, Councilmembers on, all of those applicants met the city's criteria to be eligible to funding, for funding. So, correctly noted by each of you and the deputy mayor about the request of over 10 million for our 5 million available in the human services fund, there is a significant investment opportunity in front of the council to consider investing that additional 10 million dollars in ARPA funding, which brings it up to those numbers that you saw on that last slide. Yes, there is a gap. I want to clarify, though, that that gap is spread over the biennium, so that first number was 21, 22, that next number was 23, 24, so there is a difference there. That is not a per-year difference, that would be a biennium difference, and absolutely to your point, we are always looking for opportunities to shake the trees and invite partners in to invest in our residents.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful to understand, I misread that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. Councilmember Barxell?
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, staff and commission, for the work that you've put into coming up with these recommendations. I don't have any questions, but I'll just say I'm eager to get these funds into the community, so that they can start to receive the services that they, that we know our community members need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barxell. Lastly, Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks, really appreciate the great presentation. I'm supportive of this budget as written, and very appreciative of the staff and the Human Services Commission for all the extra work, I know it's a lot. As I said in the last budget segment, this budget is, it shows our values, and putting COLA into our human services grants is excellent, I think that that's the right thing to do, especially in a time of rising inflation. And I just want to tout partnerships. We talk about partnerships a lot, but, you know, with Amazon, they gave 2 million, is that right? $2 million, I mean, that is not usual for a business in a city the size of Bellevue to donate that much to human services. I mean, it's really, we are so blessed to have partners like that, to have residents who are willing to serve, like the Human Services Commission. I just really, just, and we all want to make sure that the human services needs are met, so, and I think we're doing as well or better than we've ever done before. It's, it will probably never be enough, but we are making great strides, and I'm really proud of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. City Manager Miyaki, would you like to set up the next item?
Sure, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Our next and final item is, is an update on our development permit fees and hourly rates. In addition, we also have members, or I think members from the Isaguay and Renton School District, with respect to the impact fees, that will be presented to you this evening as well. So joining us this evening are Greg Schrader, interim co-director, as well as Jake Heselgrave, our assistant director, and Terry Jones, fiscal manager, all from the Development Services. That I'll turn it over to you two, three, to kick it off.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. We appreciate this opportunity to present the proposed 2023 updates to the Development Services fees and school impact fees. This evening's presentation is for informational purposes and to obtain feedback from council. Ordinances will be brought back to council as part of the budget adoption process later this fall. First, a quick overview of our presentation agenda. Jake will provide a high-level update on development activity, and then a review of our cost recovery model, including the guiding principles. There is a proposed policy change for council consideration related to cost recovery for land use review, that Jake will describe in more detail, and then Terry will cover the specific proposed changes to fees and hourly rates. I'll conclude with the school impact fee updates, and a quick look at the upcoming calendar, leading to budget adoption later this year. And with that, Jake, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members, it's great to be with you this evening. As we've reported to council in the past, this has continued to be a very robust development cycle. It's spanned over nine years in duration now, which is well beyond anything that we've experienced in the city previously. And I think what has stood out with this development cycle even more than some in the past, is the high level of investment being made across the city. We could certainly see that in our growth areas, as shown in the photo here with the tower cranes in downtown. We're also continuing to see interest in Bellevue, particularly on the multifamily front, which is a positive sign. However, as we all know, there is a risk of a recession on the horizon, and we are starting to see some indicators of fewer office projects moving to construction, and some cooling in the single-family housing market as interest rates start to rise. While these signs bring some uncertainty into the development forecast, there is still a large amount of development activity going on in the community out there. To highlight what that activity looks like, this first slide here shows our permitting volumes, the top line represents applications, the bottom line represents issued permits. As you can see, in 2022, we're still kind of at that peak level of permitting volumes as we go through this year, and I think at this point in time, we're somewhere around 14,000 applications that we've received, so we're on par to see what we saw last year in terms of number of applications. This next chart shows the construction valuation, and this is where you start to really see the level of investment. This is construction valuation marked by issued building permits. As you move left to right on the chart, the different bars are broken down by different building permit segments, starting with new single-family on the bottom, followed by commercial, or, excuse me, residential alterations above that. The dark blue is commercial alterations or tenant improvements, and then that top line are the major projects. As you look over on the right-hand side of this chart, at the end of Q3, we were just under $1 billion in construction valuation issued, and we do estimate will fall somewhere in the range between what we saw in 2020 and what we saw in 2021, so a little bit of a drop-off, but still a remarkable year in terms of that activity being pushed out to construction. So as I begin to talk about how we are responding to development activity, I think it's important to start by acknowledging that managing through this development cycle has been challenging, and we have seen some of those challenges reflected in the customer feedback we have received more recently. Certainly, the challenge of attracting and retaining talent in a very competitive job market has been reflected in that performance feedback at times. In addition, we're hearing pent-up demand for process improvement work, which we typically undertake as we come down out of a development cycle, which has not happened for some time. We have, however, with the council's support, been able to increase our resources by bringing on new staff over the past year, and also using outside consultants as part of our overall resource strategy. We've also placed additional emphasis on those things that can help us attract and retain talent at the city, such as new staff training, onboarding, and working with our human resources department to target efficiencies in the recruitment process. We continue to invest in technology solutions. Two recent examples include a major upgrade to our permit tracking system, and another project that is underway, where we are looking to implement some efficiencies in the way that we manage the permit files during the review process. Both of these projects highlight partnerships with the information technology department that will improve customer service, which of course is a council priority. And then finally, we continue to remain future-focused, especially as it pertains to investments in our workforce, our technology tools, and our service delivery model, which has shifted significantly over the years as a result of paperless permitting. So shifting gears a bit, I'd like to get into the main part of the presentation and talk about the Development Services Funding Structure and Financial Management Guiding Principles. These principles that you can see here have been in place for many years now, and they really serve as the basis of the line of business and help to guide our annual cost-of-service study. As a reminder, Development Services operates as an enterprise fund, similar to a private business, and we do that through a funding structure that can support the line of business through economic cycles. The funding structure allows us to maintain fairly stable rates as we move in and out of development cycles. It also allows us to make investments in technology tools and retain core staffing when we go into a downturn, so that that staffing is available to work on process improvements, and then also be available to respond as development activity picks back up. The guiding principles also establish that permit applicants should pay for the services that they receive, meaning that that money only goes towards Development Services, and that our fees should remain predictable and understandable for our customers, and then finally, that our fees are staying regionally competitive, which is another factor that we look at each year in conducting the cost-of-service study. So this next slide is where I'd like to spend some time talking about our cost recovery objectives, and the proposed change to the land use review cost recovery objective is outlined in tonight's agenda materials. And I will start by saying that Development Services operates under a full cost recovery model. We receive revenue from two sources, the fees that we charge to our customers, and then for certain services, we receive a subsidy from the general fund. Within that kind of overarching cost recovery model, this slide breaks down the portions of our services that are funded by the fees that we charge to our customers. As you can see here, we have those current fees, which have been endorsed by the council since 2003 on the top, and then the proposed cost recovery objectives down there on the bottom. And I'll just take a brief minute to walk through each one, starting on the left with public information, time, as well as our code and policy work, which the council is very familiar with, and those services that fall into that category, the funding comes from our rates, or, I'm sorry, the funding does not come from our rates, but rather from a general fund subsidy. The next box is our pre-submital support, which is that early engagement time, particularly on the major projects, prior to an actual application coming in the door, and again, none of this funding comes from our rates, but rather from the general fund. The land use discretionary review in that next box is where we start to see a portion of the funding from our rates, with 50% coming from the rates and 50% coming from general fund subsidy. As you can see on the proposed line down on the bottom of the slide, this is where we're recommending the council consider adjusting the cost recovery objective to 100% fee-supported, to align with our other review services. To conclude with the other boxes, next we see engineering review services, these are all of our review staff reviewing applications that come in the door, our inspection services, those are all the boots on the ground, out there in the field, inspecting all the projects, and then our business support services, which is all of our finance staff, technology staff, permit processing, and all the other administrative support services that go into running the line of business. And for those last three buckets, all of those services are 100% supported by our rates and our fees that we charge to our customers. So, what are the benefits of making this cost recovery change to our land use review services? As I mentioned on the last slide, this change allows us to align the funding strategy across all of our review services, which is intended to improve our performance, especially when it comes to predictability, as we look to facilitate appropriate and timely development. And one area where we know we could improve is in our resource predictability on the land use front, and this policy change would allow us to move more quickly in response to development activity, when the revenue from our fees is there to support the resources, very similar to our other revenue-backed positions. The other thing that this policy change does is it allows us to take a little pressure off of the general fund, especially in times like we're experiencing now, and it helps us prepare for that all-important process improvement work that I referred to earlier, that can deliver efficiencies for our staff and our customers. And then finally, this change really helps us respond to the growth we are experiencing, and in particular, as I mentioned previously, during those times when we need to be more nimble in our response to development activity on the land use front, we feel with the council's support, aligning the cost recovery objective for land use with our other review services and our other revenue-backed services, that it'll help us move more quickly and more nimble in the future in response to development activity. And with that, I will pass the presentation over to Terry, who will talk about the proposed fees and rates. Terry?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. The proposed fee adjustments are a result of our annual cost-of-service analysis that we conduct to ensure we're maintaining alignment with our financial policies and our cost recovery objectives. They are routine adjustments to our hourly rates, inflationary adjustments to the valuation-based fees, and adjustments to our one-time flat fees. The proposed 2023 hourly rates are shown in this chart compared to the 2022 rates. The proposed 2023 hourly rates are shown in this chart compared to the 2022 rates. For land use review, the hourly rate is proposed to increase by 41.2%, reflecting the cost recovery change that was highlighted by Jake earlier. The hourly rate for transportation review and inspection services is proposed to increase by 5.3%, fire review and inspection by 4.9%, and utilities review and inspection by 5.9%. The factors that impact the rates include salary and benefit costs, inflationary M&amp;O, and cost changes for other internal overhead, which include staff development and training and recruitment. For building permits, we use the value of the project to set the fees. The routine adjustments are to update the ICC valuation table and adjust the regional state, Washington State modifier from 1.14 to 1.13. For some high-volume permits, we charge a flat fee based on the average hours of review and inspection time, and the flat fee can change by the hourly rate and/or the average time. Because of this, some fees increase and some decrease. Shown are two examples. For land use review on a tenant improvement, the increase is $92 for full cost recovery. And another flat fee is for utilities review of a site sewer permit where the increase is $20. A couple of valuation-based fee permit examples include fees for all review and inspection services required to complete the permit. In the case of a tenant improvement project valued at $100,000, the total change in fee is $179. And for the single-family addition of 500 square feet, the total change in fees is $338. To ensure that we're regionally competitive, we've compared our fees to our neighbor jurisdictions, Seattle, King County, Redmond, Kirkland, and Issaquah. The chart compares 2022 rates as we don't know what adjustments the other jurisdictions will make for 2023. And this chart compares the current valuation-based fee for $100,000 tenant improvement permit, and Bellevue fees are the light blue bar and fall in the range between King County and Seattle. Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah charge lower fees. This next chart is for a 500-square-foot single-family addition, and again, the light blue bar is Bellevue's fee compared to our neighbors. Bellevue falls again in the range between Seattle and King County, and Redmond, Kirkland, and Issaquah charge lower fees. Seattle, King County, and Bellevue are jurisdictions with full cost recovery objectives for permit fees, while Redmond, Kirkland, and Issaquah permit costs are part of their general fund. While these charts compare the fees for the current year, we assume our neighbor jurisdictions will also increase their permit fees for 2023, and we feel that we will continue to be competitive. And I will turn the time over to Greg.
Thank you, Terry and Jake. I appreciate that. As council may recall, Development Services collects school impact fees for new single-family and multifamily residential units in the areas where the Issaquah and Renton School Districts overlap the city of Bellevue, and those fees support construction of capital facilities. The charges are a pass-through amount that the city transfers to the two school districts without charging any administrative fees since it supports school services for Bellevue families. The impact fees are addressed by Chapter 2218 of Bellevue City Code. As City Manager Miyaki indicated earlier, we do have representatives of both districts joining us remotely to answer council questions. Tracy Brewer-Rogstad is the Senior Facilities Program Director with the Renton School District, and Tom Mullins is the Director of Capital Projects for the Issaquah School District. This, the map on this slide shows the four school districts that lie within the city of Bellevue. And to the lower left, you see a small area that the Renton School District extends into the southwest corner of Bellevue, and to the lower right, the Issaquah School District extends into the southeast corner of the city. In addition, the Lake Washington School District can be seen in the north, but Lake Washington does not currently charge a school impact fee. The impact fees are determined by a formula that takes into account both the school district's capital facilities plan and the estimated number of students per new residential unit. The proposed changes for 2023 are primarily decreases, as indicated on this slide. The Issaquah single-family fee is dropping substantially by almost $9,000, and the multifamily fee is also dropping. For Renton, the single-family fee is increasing slightly, while multifamily is decreasing about $1,000. And I will conclude with a slide that you saw earlier this evening when Finance Director Tony Call walked you through this. Just a reminder that this is the last of the October study sessions. There is the last public hearing on November 7th and a placeholder on November 14th for an additional study session if needed, and a tentative adoption date for the budget on November 21st. And last, I just would remind council that this is for informational purposes, but we are seeking feedback on the fees and hourly rates, and of course, we are happy to, to answer any questions. And with that, Deputy Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the great presentation. I'll reverse the order this time. I'll start with Councilmember Robertson, and then Barksdale's on Lee, and then Councilmember Stokes, and then finish with me. So, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Robertson first.
Thank you. First, I support the 100% cost recovery. A lot of cities use that model. I think it's very normal, and I think that we need to do what we can to make sure that our fee-based systems cover their cost. I absolutely support adding all of the FTEs to permit processing. I think that's really an important aspect of providing excellent service, but it needs to be paid for. So, getting people's permits faster might cost them a little bit more, but I think it's time is money, and that's a good thing. On the impact fees, what happened in Issaquah? Were they charging too much last year? Did they mess up the math? This is a huge drop. Do you know?
I'll defer that question to Tom Mullins, who is, I believe, joining us remotely and representing the Issaquah School District. Mr. Mullins?
Good evening, everyone. I'll start out by saying school impact fee calculations are a complex calculation. We've recently lost some staff here that are the key members that prepare the information. We had a consultant that couldn't make it tonight, so I will do my best to answer your questions. Last year, we still had, Middle School 6 was a, a large growth project that was, that finished up last year, and that was one of the reasons for the, the increase that was there in 20, what we call our 21 capital facilities plan. And the drop to this year, as explained to me, was due to the fact that project came off the, off, it was completed and came off the capacity, the list of capacity projects were down to two projects left. It was discussed, it was pointed out to me that our student generation rate has dropped significantly from last year and in the high school level, and it's, we got, we got a lot of questions last year about the increase, but the capital facilities plan calculations, the calculation showed that that was the amount that was to be charged. And this year, with the student generation rates down, capacity, projects completed, that's why you're seeing the large drop.
Okay.
We do the calculations every year. We take all the factors into consideration. It's meant to reflect this, the development that is going on as compared to the projects that we have going and the need that we have.
Okay. And so, the, anything that's bonded for the projects you've completed is, you're not including that in the capital facility plan? You're just pulling it out because the project's done?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Yeah, that's quite a big drop. So, I guess my only other questions, question is, and this just occurred to me today, I always, we always pass through school impact fees. It's just kind of an automatic yes vote. Do all of the other, but we're not required to, to do it as asked. Do the other cities that serve these two school districts pass through this and adopt the school impact fees the same as we do, as requested? Or are some developers in other cities in these districts paying less, paying more?
No, and there's always been an attempt to keep the, the various cities and municipalities we have, of course, City of Bellevue, City of Issaquah, City of Sammamish, and King County, all.
They all pay the same, Tom?
They all pay the same at the same rate.
Okay, same question, I guess, for Greg about Renton.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Tracy, are you on the line to answer Councilmember Robertson's question for the Renton School District, please?
Yes, I am. And with regard to the Renton School District specifically, and the few jurisdictions that do collect for us, we have a, I guess, a standard of what we have put forth in the past. From our calculation, we have not had any changes from one jurisdiction to another. So, you know, what, what you're approving, if you're approving it as we are asking, that would be consistent with what other local jurisdictions are. We similarly have five or six different jurisdictions within our district. However, I would add, and just to kind of help Tom out in some of his answers there, it's really typical for a, a school, when a school is added to a capital project in response to growth within that district, it's not, it's not being added to replace an old school, or it's not a school that just really needs to be renovated, but it's a school that is being built or capacity is being built to address recent growth within that area, then that project is on the books for six years. So, these are all six-year capital facilities plans. And as Tom indicated, once that school falls off that six-year plan, you're generally going to see a large drop in the preferred collection.
Okay, thank you.
Dollar amount of the impact fees.
Thank you. My questions have been answered.
Okay.
Thank you. I support the budgets as recommended.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Barksdale?
I support the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Zahn?
Yes, I too am supportive of the proposed cost recovery with the, going from 50 to 100%. I think it's the, it's a thoughtful way of making sure that costs are borne by those that are utilizing that service, and so it's an important aspect of how we do business. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn. Councilmember Lee?
I support both. Thank you.
Okay, great. Going through this rather quickly. I didn't even have to enact the one-minute rule. Councilmember Stokes, would you like to say a few words?
A couple likewise, and yes, I approve both. That's four words.
Oh, this is, this is a record. Now, I feel guilty for asking a question myself, but I know that the, the mayor would, would scold me if I didn't ask this one question. So, are there any breaks to either the impact fees or the building fee adjustments or the proposed fees? Are there any fees that, that those developers that are looking to construct affordable housing in the city, do we look at giving them a break on the fees and/or expediting their, their, their permit process at all?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll answer the part relative to our fees first. So, council heard an update on affordable housing and next right work on October 10th, and staff will be returning, I believe, in the December timeframe with additional information on scope and schedule on implementation of the direction to, to reduce, provide reduced fees for affordable housing and streamline those permits. It is not included in this fee ordinance because the timing did not sync up.
Okay.
But we will return with an amendment to the fee ordinance when the details of that have been worked out. And for the school impact fees, I do not believe there is reduction, but if either Tom or Tracy have other information, please feel free to respond.
This is Tracy. I would just add that it's not prohibited, and if a, if a jurisdiction and/or a development that was looking to build low-income housing came to the school district to have discussions around reduced fees specifically for such a project, I, I do know for Renton, we are typically very open to have those conversations, but it's very much subject, you know, project by project developer. There's not a lot of precedence.
Issaquah concurs with that. We would do the same.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. And unless there's any other additional questions or comments, then I will adjourn. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[1786.24][1786.24]